I will call to order meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for the work session at 5:16 PM. We'll start out by asking for review of items, review of agenda and items on consent. Any comments there, councilors? Seeing none, any councilor concerns? We will start with our We will start with our I-5 pedestrian bridge and Gateway Plaza project update with staff member, starting with Mr. Weigle.
Zach, would you like me to go ahead?
Just one second. All right, sorry for the delay. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and council. My name is Zach Weigle, Capital Projects Engineering Manager for the city. And we're here before you tonight to give you an update on the I-5 bicycle and pedestrian bridge project. We were last before you in March with the update on the 30% design. We're now in 60% design and wanted to give you a chance to see some of the new improvements to the project that we've added since the last time we came before you. And with me tonight is Melissa Erickson with MIG. She's with the design team for the project. And just tonight, we're looking for, to make sure we're on the right track, that the design that you see is what is meeting expectation and the feedback that we've received from the public and planning commission so far. And with that, I'll turn it over to Melissa. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Zach. And good evening, council members. I'm going to give just a brief overview of the different aspects of the project focusing on some of the aesthetics and then we'll kind of talk, summarize some of the comments we heard from planning commission from last week as well. All right, so first we're going to talk about lighting. There are a variety of different lighting that's included in the plan from both the approaches, from north from Barber as well as coming from Town Center. There's aggregate path lighting that's included. There's a transition area as we work our way up to the ramp on either part and up to the bridge as well as under decking. And so we're going to show some couple of little designs of what that lighting will look like based on the conversations we've had advanced. So first, the transition areas, we're working on the ramps looking up. There are some specific light components, the click XL28 pods which are being looked at as far as casting an even ground plane and really focusing on clear sight lines and addressing clear ground aspects for pedestrians and bikes as they're navigating the overall section and as they're approaching up to the bridge component. This gives the most even lighting within that and addresses some of the considerations that were mentioned at the 30% review as well. However, the parts that people are most excited about are the projection lighting and so looking at the tiered arch opportunities and the opportunity to really kind of adjust with color and emphasizing the lighting opportunities that can be changed seasonally as the city should choose, looking at a variety of different components there. Within that, the Loomscape Linolex lighting is the piece that's being looked at currently that allows the greatest range of color options, uplighting to project onto the tiered arch itself as well as the overall cabling and creating that as a welcoming gateway to the city as well. Another option showing slightly different color symbol opportunities as far as looking a little bit more with kind of the blue and green of Wilsonville's colors and what that might look like if you're on I-5 as a counterpoint to that. Next, we're going to move on to the ramp walls itself. These occur both on the west and on, within the plaza itself. This is the section where the pedestrians and bikes navigate from at street grade up into the bridge structure itself. There is a bearing height element both on the west approach and in the main plaza where there's an opportunity to face and address the siding and what that treatment may be. There was a public survey that was completed a few months ago looking at different opportunities, including a variety of concrete form liner works, stone work, murals, different art components within that. The two images on the upper left circled in red were the by far highest votes received from the public comments, so looking at some type of concrete form liner that has a little bit more of a nature-based iconic look and texture. And then the stone or andorbasalt wall, both clearly the top two tops, so those both issued fairly similar numbers of votes.
Just to add on a little bit to that, to that public engagement, to that public engagement process that we went through, it was really to get a sense of where the public is at on what they would like to see on the, for kind of some themes for this wall. Our proposal moving forward is to engage a local artist when we get closer to construction to come up with something specific for that wall.
So we're not talking about this particular image, but that type of concept?
That's correct, right.
Yes, general idea.
Do we need to ask questions right now or do you want to wait? I was just wondering on the, the one that looks like rocks, that looks like basalt, is that, is that intended to be natural rock or made out of concrete?
Yeah, it's meant to be a real rock and actually be basalt columns and having it be true stone. That was the intent. However, there are some significant cost impacts with that, as you can imagine.
Yes, I can imagine. The other thing, I really like that rock one, I think that's very attractive, but it's certainly not historically accurate. We don't have anything like that here. That would be accurate for Westland or Orient City or something, but Wilsonville is a bunch of mud, you know, very deep soil, you have a hard time finding a rock here. But it's very, it's very attractive, so I don't know if that, if that plays into it at all, that it's not geologically accurate, I guess would say, historically or geologically accurate, that sort of thing.
Certainly. Excellent. And we will come back to that. Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead, Zach.
We've shown this image a number of times and it's always like the top, it gets the top votes. And it really, I think Melissa will get to it, but it's currently proposed in the plaza on the opposite side of this wall and she can talk more about it, but it is trying to stick with that river theme and something that would be a key, you know, key visual element to the plaza, but we're jumping heads.
But that's a, that's a Mount Hood theme, not really a Willamette theme.
Well, as shown as technically it's actually in New York, but I think the intent is some type of stone texture, you know, maybe we go with glacial erratic, which would be at least more appropriate to the Ice Age Trail as a nod, but it is certainly something that people have strongly and positively responded to.
And even the glacial erratics, you know, they tend to look like river stones, they're roundish boulders, which is hard to build a wall out of round rocks, but whatever.
Yeah, and we would probably need to look at something that was a faux material, but certainly a possibility as well. Right, all right, so let's move into the plaza. So overall, not much as far as the graphic in plan view has changed. We still have an undulating path that leads from the Gateway Plaza that works its way as a passive, meandering path to a singular area with scattered seating throughout. Strong emphasis on plants, as you may recall in the early public surveys, the strong intent was to really not have big gathering spaces, but have lots of little nodes for people to sit and enjoy and kind of contemplate have their lunch. And so that has been and continues to be the focus of this, continuing with the drops and ripples theme that has been kind of worked throughout. So we'll go back to some key diagrams, as you may recall from what we had before, so we can kind of walk through some of the different elements and talk about a few things that have slightly changed as we've been looking ahead. So let's talk about the wall. So as we noted within the plaza itself and within the key map at the top, that pink land band is demarcating the area where we've been looking at having a rock wall. This has been something the public has spoken about quite a bit, everyone responds positively. While the image on the left is kind of one of the ones that people have responded to, basalt tends to be a little bit more vertical depending on earth movement. There are some options to source basalt, but as we've already discussed, you know, there is some question about whether that is endemic to Wilsonville itself, and so that might be a consideration. And so that was what we had in the 30% drawing. However, in the 60%, we've modified it to look at a concrete form liner, both for cost effectiveness, to address some of the concerns, just as we're looking at kind of overall budgets, et cetera, because there's a pretty significant cost difference between using concrete versus stone work, but granted, there's also a difference in those materials at a pretty strong level and we'll talk about overall cost as well. But at this point, we're looking at facing the concrete of the ramp with form liner to give the appearance of basalt with looking at colored concrete as part of that and getting some relief to provide some added aesthetics and texture to the overall component. In the 30% design and all the areas that are that kind of hot pink, we are looking at some specialty paving. We've been looking at hexagonal pavers and some tones to kind of play with that ripple theme. However, in talking with maintenance, there were some significant concerns that they had with the maintainability of having pavers with some of the vehicular loads and overall kind of considerations on that front. So in the 60%, while we've looked at, we're still keeping some bands and some demarcations, but we're looking at a lithocrete, which is a colored glass that gets top dressed, building off of kind of this, more of this teal blue color, but this is potentially what it might look like. We're going to be looking at some better images there. But maintenance did have some concerns with pavers, long time use, repair considerations. So we have shifted and are looking at this as an alternative to provide some additional punch for the pedestrian areas that can better take vehicular loads as well. Everyone has loved the kernel seating in all of the images, so that all the little hot little pink dots in the plan are where we have these. We're looking at two sizes, kind of a slightly larger one and then these smaller ones perhaps that is similar to the gray in the smaller image. We're looking at a mix of colors and so these are all polished concrete and so looking at kind of a range of neutrals building off of the basalt wall and keeping that color theme consistent as well as with some of the other like furniture features within the plaza. For the seat walls and side tables, again, kind of located in the hot pink on different areas, looking at some different topresses softened, the seating provides some alternatives while being cognizant of concerns for skateboarding and longevity, but wanting to have some table like surface that people would use to, you know, put their laptop down and work or have their lunch. There are some concerns with durability for the tables, so we're looking at some options, but this gives an idea of what that might look like to try and bring in both a little bit of color but a little bit more functionality along with that seat wall considerations. Additionally, and primarily at the main Gateway Plaza, there's some Ballard lighting, bike loop racks and trash cans, these all build off of Town Center furnishings, those slightly different colors so that they work with the rest of the components that still tie into the Town Center amenities. And then a couple other pieces, there was a strong desire to make sure that we address shade and provide some opportunities, also rain protection and looking at some opportunities. So we're looking right now at a couple custom different shades structures that provide at least some filtered shade and some water resistance and/or protection. There's still some ongoing discussion just because they do have perforations, so it does not give you complete coverage. And so we're looking at some different possibilities that might be able to help kind of address something that's a little less permeable and something that's a little bit more solid while also acknowledging that there are concerns for maintenance or cleanliness, particularly like looking at plexiglass or some other clear surface that can get dirty and addressing that. So this is one piece that we're looking at to try and kind of strike the medium between providing some protection but giving some relief as well.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I ask a quick question?
So we've been talking, yes, please.
Under the shade structure, I thought about this, have we ever considered or would we consider like misting in the hot summer, like they would do at Disneyland that we all appreciate? I know a lot of people would this weekend if that, if it existed, but on this last weekend, but I didn't know if that would be an option, just to allow a little bit of like reprieve.
That is certainly a possibility. We aren't looking at it right now, but it is certainly something we could if that was a desire.
I have a question. Back to the shade structures, so just to confirm, you're not looking to, do I understand, you're not looking to have a solid surface? It would not be roof, it would just, it's be, it's kind of like a, what's the word?
Permeated?
It's permeable.
Anyway, you're looking for something, a garden, a garden gazebo type roof or structure that has light coming through it, is that the objective?
Yeah, we're trying to kind of strike the happy medium between providing some filtered shade for when it's hot and some, you know, cutting down of rain for that season and kind of hitting that mid tone. We've looked at a few options for something that would be solid, haven't found anything that were quite like yet, but also know that there's a balance in there, but also wanted to have something that had a nice kind of shade pattern to provide a little more depth to the experience.
Did you guys look at the triangular cloth, gardeny, like you see them, they're like, like fabric, yeah?
Sales.
Like sales, yeah, make cool geometrical kind of shapes with them. Is that, I don't know if that's cool enough, but I know they're pretty cool.
Yeah, there's a lot of different options for the temple sail structures. I think the biggest issue there is just the need for them to be replaced because they do wear over time. They also kind of get bleached out over time, so it does become something that has a shorter shelf life. We've been looking at something that was perforated metal that would ideally then have a much longer lifespan so that it's a longer investment in return for the city. But sunshells are certainly an option, but one we kind of ruled out, but we could revisit that if that's also an interest.
Oh, councillor Lynn Bill?
I just, I'm just wondering if the priority has been really established. I know right now, because we're all hot and it's sunny, that shade appears to be, you know, out front and center in people's minds today, but the reality is that the longer period of time in our climate is rainy, cooler. And so it seems to me that some priority needs to be made. Are we looking at something that is going to protect, where people can get out of the rain or is it simply just shade? And I think that should drive the design more than, you know, and that should probably solve the questions about should it be semi-permeable or a structure that would allow people to be out of the rain.
Yeah, you know, we, we're trying to strike, what we're trying to do is strike a balance because once you have a solid surface, you got to collect that rainwater off of that, you got to take it somewhere and you have to treat it. So, you know, I think Melissa's done a good job of trying to create something that offers some protection, you get a little bit protection of the rain, also offer some shade, but also offer something that's really interesting to the plaza. We can take a look at options of providing, you know, a solid cover over that, it's just, it does make it a lot more challenging to deal with the stormwater.
Well, I appreciate that you're looking at the long-term cost. I think that's really important so that we don't inadvertently end up with something that is more costly to maintain.
that is more costly to maintain than necessary. And we're probably not looking for a roof structure that would be a place to stay for, you know, these are visiting points, so like shade, you know, a little bit, it's, it's you're walking across the bridge and you're visiting and you're sitting down, but you're probably not, I don't know, on the rainy days, people don't stay out there for too long. Because they've got to walk a ways to get there and then walk to get to the other side and so forth. So I, I like the idea of what, where you're going here and, and is on the left, the one that is circled, is that, um, you might have mentioned it and I just didn't, didn't pick up the name, um, is that an untreated, um, steel that could rust on purpose?
Oh, that it just happens to be a standard image of it, but we are looking at having it powder coated, um, building off of Walthamville's colors, um, as a kind of singular color note, yes.
Okay, so it could have color.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Great. All right. And I think the, the main thing we wanted to kind of at least talk about was, was cost because obviously that's a factor, and I think some of the changes have been in kind of a response as the team has been looking at, you know, both long-term investment, um, and smart choices. Um, but there are cost trade-offs, as we've already talked about with, with the surface in particular for the, the plaza ramp surface and whether it's form liner or actual stone. Um, but the current cost estimate that we have for the, the bridge and the ramp is looking at a 14.2 to 18.8 million dollar price tag. And the plaza cost, which currently is assuming the concrete form liner, is, you know, somewhere in the 2.7 to 3.7 million. Obviously, there's still, you know, some contingency funding in that as we're kind of honing in and tightening thing up, up on materials, but that means a total cost of 16.9 to 22 and a half million. So there's still some, you know, significant costs, and I think the team is looking at opportunities to make sure that, that this is smart use of money, that takes a look at longer-term costs, um, and minimizing maintenance, um, but not having everything just be a, you know, a single dump, but trying to take a look at what is going to make this unique investment that you all are making, something that is worth the effort and the time as we're looking at both town center developing and creating this gateway to the city as well. So there are a range, that's, um, materials in there still as we're looking forward to that, but that's part of the consideration that we're looking at as well. And Zach, I wasn't sure if there's anything from the planning commission comments that you wanted to pass on as well?
Yeah, sure. I can, uh, speak to the planning commission comments, so, um, main comments that we received was on the, the, uh, the glass concrete, uh, some concerns from planning commission about it looking washed out and not getting that, that, uh, striking difference, uh, that we're looking for, um, between the different bands of concrete. Um, so we'll be looking into that. Um, we, um, the, the basalt columns, they, um, did not like the form liner, uh, would like to look at, um, a different design rather than move forward with the, uh, the concrete form liner. Uh, they like the basalt columns, uh, but are concerned about the additional cost. Uh, we did have the design team run some costs on what it would take to do sourced basalt on that wall in the plaza, and it was about $400,000. Um, so we'd like to get your feedback on, on that item. And then also, uh, what Melissa touched on was the durability of the tables, and we're looking at alternatives like she said about that.
So you'd like our feedback on the basalt or the form liner?
Mm-hmm. Or to look at something completely different.
Is the, the, are there options for the form liner, um, kind of open to a different look than what we you have here? Is that part of the issue?
Yeah, we could look at different form liners, the, uh, patterns. The, the planning commission also mentioned that they like the idea of maybe moving the green wall to, from what's now on the north side of that wall to, into, into the plaza. That we may have some concerns with a south-facing green wall, um, that we'll have to look into if that's a direction. They also like that image of the, the natural etching that was shown before. I know Melissa, you can go back to that, but something like
Oh, I don't.
A concrete etching on the, on that wall, um, was something they're interested in. Uh, and there's all, we can also revisit, you know, any number of, uh, of, of designs.
So where did the basalt wall come from?
Yeah, originally it came from like, it came from the design team as just a, during the, the image preference survey that we did like early on in the project.
So, um, my suggestion would be to have a conversation with someone like Scott Burns or someone from, who is from the Ice Age Flood Institute, or someone else from the Ice Age Flood Institute, to see if there isn't a rock kind of thing that would be more appropriate to the, the, to our location in the Ice Age Trail, which I think is what we tried to do on the Beckman Crossing Bridge, to do things that were appropriate to the Ice Age Trail. Because this would definitely be out of place for that thing, and we're very close to the Ice Age Trail where that thing is coming across, that bridge. So, um, it, um, somebody like Scott Burns, who is a renowned geologist, would be interesting to get his opinion. Is there another kind of rock form that would be more appropriate geologically to this part of the trail? Since this is, you know, now, now becoming a national park trail, um, that goes, whatever, clear up almost to Canada, but, um...
I would agree with that, um, direction, or looking into that and seeing if then there is a form liner concept that could support that.
Mayor Fitzgerald, isn't there similar walls where they tell a story at the zoo where it's more concrete, but there's almost a picture?
Yes, I'll tell you what that is. There is, uh, there is a, um, a concept called, it's an etched concrete, they actually make it in Harrisburg, Oregon, that you might know about, and what it does is, um, you, you create an image. We actually had an image of two polar bears, and we also had one of some, um, just kind of foresty-looking, um, images that we wanted to have in a, in habitat instead of just plain concrete walls. So they, they, in this vat, they put some kind of solution that carries the images and then pours, pour the concrete, and then at the end of that, it's permanently etched. It's not very 3D, it has a very minor dimension to it. So it doesn't do, but that's, you know, I was thinking of that, but it doesn't do as much as what you see here with the heron, but maybe the, the etching could provide something. It could, I'm sure they have that in their design bank.
The, the heron reminds me of the elephant down by the play structure that was done by a local masonry, that, um, just outside by the zoo, but, um, I know what you're talking about, and I think those are, I love they're really great, those are, they have great imagery that way, the wall retaining walls and what they, how they design those, and they tell a story in an engaging way.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, yeah, so we can definitely look into those.
And so, thank you. So, um, other direction?
Yeah, any, uh, any other feedback on the lighting?
I was going to say that I like this, um, Loomoscape Linolux. It appeals to me off the bat because you can do different things with it. Um, we're talking about recognizing different cultural events from different, um, groups around the world, and perhaps we could tie into some of that. Is the energy usage, um, expectations about the same, or is there any, any big difference on what it takes to run those two different types of lights?
I believe they're all LED.
Okay. Any other light?
Uh, on the lighting, um, you had said that, that these, I mean, I, I do think these are beautiful examples of lighting that could change different colors, so that would be great. You had said they were, um, the underside is projected onto there. Where is it projected from, right next to it, I presume?
Yeah, the, the projection lighting, we actually have had an image of that, is on the outside of the safety fencing, um, right on the edge of the bridge, there's like a notch where the, the projection lighting sits.
That's what would go up here on this high up?
Yeah, and it projects it.
Thing?
Yeah.
So is that?
Down on the bridge surface, but behind the fencing.
Right, but what, how, how do we get this, um, these colors and these lights up on the top, where you look up and it's up there?
Um, it projects it onto the structure.
From way down there?
Yeah.
So, so, um, what's our night sky issue?
So, we did look at, uh, we did take into account the, the, uh, dark sky, uh, compliance, uh, and we're trying to balance that, right? We're not using LED strips on the structure itself, which would really cause, uh, a lot of, um, uh, of glare into the, into the sky, but we're also getting, you know, this type of lighting minimizes that glare into the sky by just projecting it onto the structure. Um, but there, you know, it's not completely dark sky. We're not going to be able to get that glow without, without having some impact, but we're trying to minimize it as much as we can.
That is a downside, and then the...
We're not including things like uplighting the structure or anything like that with, you know, the, the bright lights, like, like you see in a lot of bridges.
I have a specialty paving question. A question on specialty paving. Um, I, and it might even be more cost affordable, I know there's a lot of options with stamped and colored concrete. Is there a way to almost get the same effect with good contrast if you have a talented contractor that's really gifted with the stamped concrete, the breaking in the same color scheme? Um, but I, I've seen that be done in a really, um, attractive ways.
Yeah, the, we've talked about that with the design team, and Melissa can, can fill in, uh, some more, but, uh, you know, the, the issue with, with stamped concrete, colored concrete is it real, it fades really quickly.
Because of that.
And then if you have, um, you know, if you have like a stamped concrete and a piece breaks off, there's really no way to fix it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
If you have to, if you have to cut into it, there's no way to match the exact color, so there's some long-term challenges with doing stamped colored concrete.
Yeah, but there are other options besides the glasscrete that we've shown, so we are looking at some other options that are more integral to the finished piece that would self-convey that specialty look, but address the future maintenance needs.
But yeah, if you do, if you share the same, um, concerns as planning commission about the glass being washed out, looking and not really getting that contrast, then we can definitely keep looking at alternatives.
I think so.
It's hard to tell from these pictures exactly what the contrast is, or if that's, right, but...
Can I just, um, ask a question about the seating? I think you were wanting some feedback on that and the tables, and, um, I was wondering in a couple of the photographs, there are what appear to be like either armrests or dividers on the benches, and did I hear that that was to, um, prohibit skateboarders from riding their skateboards up on those benches? Is, was that?
No, the handrails are for accessibility to help people kind of get up and down, but we are looking at these attachments as a skateboard hindrance because it changes the, the planer edge, um, and creates a disruption, so that would be less skateboardable. Although I think if you want to skateboard anything, you probably could, but it is something that we heard from maintenance, so just looking at some different ways besides skate stops to look at, um, providing a little bit more articulation along those edges, but that is not a concern. But the handrests are, are really to help people get up and down.
Oh.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think one, the one thing with this design is there's a lot of concrete seat walls throughout the plaza, so trying, which skateboarders love. Um, so integrating these wood, um, these wooden bench areas onto that seat wall help with mitigating some of that skateboard, skateboarding.
Yeah, uh, you know, my preference obviously is the lower ones there rather than in the previous, I think it's in the previous picture where they're really high, and I'm just thinking about families that are trying to, you know, sit with children and they've got to put a child on one side of that barrier or the other, and, uh, depending on the width, you know, it, it could become an issue.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, that was really where my question was coming from. And then in terms of the tables, in this last, um, in the photograph that's currently up, um, it appears, and, and I guess in the concrete one as well, um, it appears as if those could be, I mean, they're, they're not, tables are not going to be everywhere there is seating, correct?
Right.
And...
Correct.
So my guess is that people would like a place to be able to set up a coffee or, you know, a sack lunch or something like that. And, um, I'm wondering if those periodic concrete pads in between what appears to be seating might function in that way and eliminate the need for us to worry about how are we going to have tables here and there, which become a maintenance as well as a design issue. So, um, just, just a couple thoughts there.
Yeah, I will, I will add that, you know, this, this came from the planning commission during the 30% design, they really wanted to see some tables, um, in a, integrated, um, in key locations, so it was trying to address that, that concern, um, but we can, we can keep looking at alternatives.
Yeah, I would agree with the, um, with the comments that the rest of the councils made about just concern over, um, and the planning commission, the glass, you know, having enough impact. I think, I think it would be really nice and a low maintenance. I would agree that there's problems with the pavers. Um, I'm regretting that decision in my own place, and, um, uh, so, uh, I, I would agree that, uh, the maintenance issues on the pavers is, is horrendous, and especially, um, they, um, uh, roots and the movement of the soil really does impact pavers, and so, um, I would agree with all of that. The other is, just in terms of the, the wall and the, the appearance of the wall, um, uh, I, I, I recognize that the basalt is probably not, um, consistent with our area. It's really pretty.
It's really pretty.
And it, um, and I, and I noticed in the, some of the notes that there's issues about availability, even, um, you know, even if we could afford to have it. And, um, while it might not be, um, consistent with our landscape, uh, um, it, it looks really nice, and I think the, the form liner is, is probably a good alternative if we can find, um, and, and I wouldn't even be opposed to, um, putting the design characteristics, you know, like the ones with the heron in, in both of those two areas, rather than trying to, um, you know, come up with the columns. So that's just my comment. One more comment on the basalt. With all due respect to the Ice Age Trail, um, perhaps we, they are also considering this is the, uh, we're on the way to other areas in the Northwest. I'm trying to stretch that a little bit, but we are in a region here.
The gateway to different rocks.
Right. Haven't heard that before. And we have to remember that the Ice Age rocks were not here in the beginning. They came with the Ice Age.
That's true.
The basalt was in West Lynn, that came out of Mount Hood.
Yeah.
That, that didn't come here.
Well, we could help them get some, we could feature West Lynn. I mean, that could be...
Our rocks came from Montana.
Religion's not like this.
So did we cover enough of the topics?
Yeah, I, I think, um, yeah, we will, we'll keep looking at, uh, different designs for the, that wall and, um, and, um, keep moving forward.
I do have one comment on the glass, just to throw it in the, in the hopper for some ideas. I like the, even though it, perhaps, the, there's a concept that it would fade or wouldn't have a lot of contrast, it does give you a lot of, um, texture, and it evokes the idea of recycled materials, and I think it has, there's a lot of people who are really drawn to glass. I, I think it has some...
Is the fading con-
Is the fading concern with the stamped concrete, or with the glass?
With the stamped concrete.
Okay.
The glass is just, it's a very different feel to the, to the plaza overall than we originally had shown with the pavers, so, we just wanted to point that out, and then Planning Commission had concerns with it just being dull, like a duller color, so...
Well, perhaps they could look at some different applications of glass than what they have there, I don't know.
Yeah, we can keep looking.
And...
And then on the basalt wall, I guess what I'm hearing is to keep, keep looking for some alternatives to the basalt.
You see those, those roundy things you had people sitting on, those would be accurate for the area...
The kernels.
Yeah, those kernels, whatever.
They're hard to glue onto the side of a wall, though.
That's what I'm saying, they aren't structurally convenient, but, but they're authentic to what you would find either in the way of glacial erratics, or actual river rock from the river, they would be all worn like that, roundy, so those, those look authentic.
That's good, because those are probably the second most favorite image that we've shown.
Well, I think we've about reached our time on this item, if we've given you, everybody...
May I just make, I just want to make one more comment, and that was that I started, as I started looking at this, thinking about the streetscape in town center, and some of the ideas about how, how the patterns on the sidewalks, especially at the corners and the intersections, were going to be, and I wondered if there wasn't some benefit in mirroring, mirroring some of those images to actually tie closer to town center, and so I know that that's kind of way out there from where we were with the survey and everything else, but I think there is some, maybe some opportunity to tie those two there.
Yeah, we've definitely been tying the, the different fixtures to make sure they're, they're not the same, but they're compatible, right, they, they go with one another, so we are coordinating between the two, but that, but that is something we could look at, you know, instead of the colored glass, maybe looking at different grays to, to match what's going on in the town center.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We will now move to a 40-minute presentation on middle housing in Wilsonville with Mr. Pauli.
Good evening. Let me get my presentation up here. As I bring this up, it was here an hour ago.
Still there?
There it is, here.
Do you need some IT support, Dan?
Yeah, where's...
Coming, right up behind you.
Oh, it's just, the Zoom screen was minimized, that's why, okay. There we go. So, first of all, I just want to start by acknowledging all the great work that the Planning Commission's done on this, they're getting ready for their public hearing coming up, and they've had eight work sessions, they've given it a lot of thought, and the input's been really appreciated, and they've been really thoughtful, it's been great to work with them, as well as with the council, and we've had great support from a good consultant team as well, and, so, it's, it's been, it's been a good process, and also appreciate all the public and stakeholders that have been involved, it's, it's been some really good conversations to get us to this point. So, tonight, what we want to cover is driveway and parking design for middle housing, parking standards, middle housing land divisions, and middle housing, revisit middle housing in Frog Pond West briefly. So, next, where we're going from here is, as mentioned, Planning Commission will have their hearing on September 8th, we'll be back at council for a work session on the 20th to brief you on that public hearing and answer any outstanding questions before a scheduled city council hearing in October. I'll put up on the screen for a moment the desired project outcomes that we discussed early this year, and that we've remained focused on throughout this, and they have been helpful to guide the project, and help us get to where we are, and continue to push us as we, as we continue to refine the proposed updates for adoption. So that, let's dive in, and I'm going to cover these first couple topics pretty briefly, and then, we can pause and talk about driveway and parking design, as well as the parking standards, all at once. So, first of all, to summarize the driveway and parking design, there, the state has a model code that differentiates by product, by middle housing type, and we're able to use that, so that's really the basis of most of this, and so generally, we apply that, and it does allow some flexibility, that allows us to focus on separated driveways where possible, which is consistent with community feedback through the survey and other conversations we've had. It does also include some options for consolidated driveways, as well as alley access as appropriate, which, both the alley access in particular reflects the, the, the community feedback, the survey, and consolidated driveways are necessary under some circumstances. This is, next, let's go to parking standards. So, this gets to one of the desired project outcomes of minimizing parking congestion, which is important, we do face some constraints when, when we address this topic, first of all, is limited land, there's a lot of demand for land, and it needs to be balanced with other items, interestingly, in the survey we did, having extra parking landed about halfway through a list of items, when we talked about yard space, and distance from neighbors, and things like that, so, we need to balance it with everything else that takes up land. There's also a state requirement, that jurisdictions can't require one, more than one space per unit, so that's a reality that we're working under. So with that understood, then the question comes, what can we do, and so, we focus on a couple of things as we've done these draft standards, first of all, making parking spaces more usable and accessible. So, specific things we've done here is require that the parking, the required parking be on site, that it's of a standard size, nine by 18, it's clear of obstructions, that we have standards to make sure that things like trash containers aren't put in the parking spaces, make sure that sidewalks and pedestrian easements are separate from parking spaces, and also require private restrictions on garage use when the garage is designated as the required parking spot. When it comes to encouraging, something, when you look at a code, when a typical home designer or developer looks at a code, they assume typically that the code is what the city wants, so we can say in the code that we, for larger units over 1,000 square feet, that we prefer two parking spaces, and the home designers will be aware of that, and if it makes sense, if there's room on the site planned, then they can do that, and if you look back at housing that's been built over a number of years, a majority does have more than one space per unit. So, ma- making clear that that's our preference, however, also acknowledging that we can't deny a permit if they elect to only do one space. Next is incentivizing, and let me go to another slide to talk through that, we outreach in particular, pointed a desire to have visitor parking, and the visitor parking would need to be designated, otherwise it'd become extra vehicle parking, and visitor parking can be significant, to be able to have gatherings, it can be culturally and personally significant, so their visitors don't have to walk that far, these little parking alcoves, as can be seen in this photo here from Charbonneau, exist, and really, the idea here is that trade-off, parking consumes land, as I said, so incentivize a small reduction of other things that take up land, including lot size and open space, but just a small reduction, which allows introduction of this additional shared parking. This option would be available to developers if 10% of more of the lots in the development do not have adjacent on-street parking, because on-street parking, where available, can provide these visitor parking spaces, it would need to be within 250 feet of a lot without on-street parking, and it'd be encouraged to be, to be pervious, so there's not additional land taking up with more stormwater features, and also, it'd be owned, maintained, and enforced by the HOA, so there wouldn't be additional maintenance or cost to the city. So with that, that is what I had to share about parking briefly tonight, and of course, you had a lot more in your packet about parking, so happy to answer any questions or take any feedback on the parking aspects that we're working on.
Well, I would comment, go ahead, Councilor Lian.
I was going to comment, but I'll let you guys go first. I mean, what I, what I was going to say is, I think that Charbonneau, who might comment, has generally done an excellent job with parking, but part of that is that they're pretty strict about not parking on the street, partly French Prairie, most of those side streets are not wide enough to, don't have street parking on any side, and, and they have many of these pullouts for visitor parking, and then they're quite strict through the homeowners association about putting your car in the garage at night, not even on your parking pad, is my understanding, and, so, you go through Charbonneau, and you don't really see cars, but I, we don't have any neighborhoods who have accomplished what Charbonneau has, and that's very early development. The other one that is very close, has tried, and come fairly close, is Fox Chase, which also has a minimum with streets, they have parking on one side of the street, but they have pullouts for visitor parking also there, so they've, they, they've tried, and to do that at Fox Chase also, maybe other neighborhoods, but none of them's come to mind, the rest of them are pretty standard stuff. And then you said about somehow incentivizing or controlling something or other use of the garage for storage, how would one do that?
So, this is something that we've done before, there was a condition on a development where they were, where it was a dense, a denser area, and we knew that overflow, any overflow parking would, would be an issue for neighbors, so we actually required them, in that case, to write into the covenants that, you know, it's like 30 days after you move, you have to have your garage clear, and have to keep it clear for, for a parking spot.
So, who would enforce that?
That would be the HOA.
So they would go around and look in your garage, and make sure that it didn't have stuff in it, or too much stuff in it?
Have to see it open.
I think it would be dictated by the fact that cars were not parking in the garage.
Yeah, yeah, park, your car.
If that's the way it is in, in Charbonneau, it's that you're not supposed to park your car on the, in the driveway.
Well, I, I think that it would probably work the same as if somebody has invasive plants growing into the neighbors, then you can, you know, it's, it's stated in the HOA, and you get a letter, or, you know, right?
I mean, I, I can see it if, if it's like Charbonneau, where your car has to be, has to be in the garage, but that's different than keeping your garage clear, so that your car could get in the garage.
Right, so...
Those are two different enforcement approaches, I would say, now, what?
I was just saying, either way, it would be the HOA enforcing, not the city.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And the, the neighbors do, you know, in these cases, I think it's a matter of the HOA managing itself to that, if nobody cares, and there's not an issue, I suppose nobody would speak up.
Correct.
Now, the, the other strategy that, that of course, a lot of apartment places use, or condo places use, is, is carports, so that you have a carport in a storage unit, but, but the carport is open, or at least open on two sides, or two or three sides, so that it doesn't, it's not a place to store stuff, but then you also have a, like a carport, something half the size of a garage, that where you could put your bicycles and, and your lawnmower, or whatever, but not a car, too small for a car, but you can put all your stuff in there, and then you have, you have a carport for your car, and, and that way, you don't, you know, people aren't, aren't generally going to put their luggage and boxes in the carport, because it's not secure, and it's...
Easily observable.
And, and it looks junky, but, but, but I didn't see that as a piece of this, I mean, you know how it is in a lot of the parking, I mean, apartment complexes?
Yes.
They are...
Right.
They are carports, and then they have a storage unit beside, in the, but in, in places like Village at Main, where they have garages, my guess would be, over half of them are full of stuff and not cars.
Correct, and so, I mean, this has an option, it's really about options, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you can't have a driveway, you can put the required amount of parking, we don't require garages, so you could just have surface parking, meaning your minimum, but if you don't provide a driveway parking spot, and you say, we have to meet our minimum on space in the garage, then we're going to have some more restrictions on that, because that needs to be kept clear, but in most cases, it's probably going to be a typical garage where there's other parking areas, potentially on the lot, and you may use it for storage, or for bikes, or, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, but, but what people need is a place to park their car, and they need a place to store their stuff, and usually, if there's a place on the street, they're going to put their stuff in the garage, and put their car on the street.
Correct.
So this is a good suggestion, that I think you can note, the carport, the storage unit, and we have two other councillors to speak, Councilor Lindell.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I was, I wanted to hear your lived experience with Charbonneau, if you were going to speak to that, but, I have brought this up before, is, I don't know if there's a way for us to put into the code, or the ordinances, to require a certain amount of storage, so we can ensure that the garage is being used within, within a structure, so we can ensure that garage is actually being used for parking, so I, we've owned two homes in Wilsonville now, so this is anecdotal, but this is my experience, the first house we owned was in Villawatt, it had a rear garage into an alleyway, and, which was fine, except that the alleyway was a little precarious, because it was just so narrow, and so, getting in and out, even if you had to park both cars, was a little bit of a challenge, and a little precarious, and then even with public services coming in out of the alleyway, that was, we've lost many a bush limbs and things like that, because it was just too narrow. I liked the front of the house and the curb appeal, that was wonderful, where we lived in our, although houses facing each other, it was like we lived in a little park, but it was a little tenuous the way it was constructed, on the back end, just so tight, but it did give good appeal, I, I also tend to lean towards the idea of not having to share parking spaces, or adjoined, but having some separation between parking spaces, I think, is a better visual appeal, and some flexibility on, on, on my two cents on that piece, and, yeah, I don't know if there's any way that we can create, or work with builders, or the code to make it more likely to store, because right now, you're going through Villawatt, and there's, you know, people's garages, they, they've got their ski stuff in there, they've got their fishing gear, they've got, you know, their, their stuff for the next garage sale, I mean, it's just packed full of stuff, so, how do we, but there's also in some of those homes, no place to store anything, so, and the storage is lacking, so, I don't know, that's kind of my, how I see it.
No, we can look into the storage aspect of it.
Councilor Lindell.
I would agree that incentivizing the visitor parking is a grand idea, and leaving it And leaving it to the HOAs to maintain and to manage is, has worked really well in Charbonneau. One of the things that I had a conversation with Dan about earlier today was this idea of, and you can see in this photograph where there are two garages and without any very small separation between those two driveways with a planting area, it could create some opportunity for conflict between neighbors. And those were some of the comments that were in the packet as well about the shared driveway. So I've asked if you could look at how that might, you know, in the cases of a shared driveway, could there be even just some small, you know, it didn't have to be the full length of the driveway as in this photograph, even just halfway down that driveway is enough to create that kind of separation. And I know that, as, I mean, on page 34 of our packet of 537, and it's three of five in the staff report, when it talks about the updated standards to ensure required parking is usable and accessible, in that first bullet, it talks about the standard size for spaces in the garage of nine feet by 18. And nine feet, I'm assuming that's the width and the 18 feet is the, or is it the other way?
It's nine feet wide by 18 feet long is the standard parking space size.
Yeah. And we have a few places in some of the condos in Charbonneau where those, they are those small little garages. And literally, it is like your car gets in there and you can barely open the doors to be able to get out. So there is some storage area in the front end, but that's really it. And most of those units have, as Councilor Lehan was saying, they have one of those tiny garages, but they also have a carport. So while it looks like in the, in the code, you know, it says the current code doesn't have any requirement for garage sizes, I think this is talking about putting in some size for garage.
Only if you're going to have it as your required parking spot. So you could do a smaller garage if it's not your required parking space.
And...
But if it is, it has to be big enough to fit a car, to have a standard sized parking space.
So if it's not considered the parking place, would it be the driveway would be considered the parking place?
It could be a driveway or a carport, yeah. Most likely the driveway.
Most likely the driveway. So a few, I guess all I'm saying is, the smaller that garage mandated is, the less likely people are going to park in it. The more they're going to use it for a storage spot.
And that's why, or if it's meeting the required parking, it has to be big enough to be used for storage. So I think we can, I have some ideas. We'll all talk to the rest of the team to see if we can make some storage requirement, particularly in a situation where you are meeting the minimum requirement with the garage. So we'll look into that.
Now, one thing to keep in mind, do you remember what, what is this plan called that Charbonneau is, the townhouses? Do you know? It was copied off of Big Development in California?
Villas?
Oh, anyway.
I don't remember.
I forgot. But we have to keep in mind that Charbonneau is a different kind of development. It hasn't been replicated here. And because those streets that you see in that picture, those are essentially alleys. They look like a street, sort of, because they're big for an alley. But those are alleys and the houses were designed, the townhouses anyway, were designed to open onto the golf course.
Right.
And a public walking way in the golf course, which we allowed them to take out and shouldn't have because that was, that was part of the plan, was that the houses all open out onto the golf course and they're, and they face the golf course and the street is an alley. And all you see are garages. Now, in a normal neighborhood, the rest of the neighborhoods, and certainly Villalobah, they're designed so that the house faces the street and the living faces the street, the living areas face the street. And a lot of current zoning, you know, discourages snout houses where all you see are garages. But that wasn't the plan originally with Charbonneau. This was a very modern thing when it went in and was designed to, you were designed to communicate the way Villalobah does, really, out the front on the walkway. And the walkway was the shortest way to get to the village center and et cetera, et cetera. That's the way the Charbonneau Village was designed to work. And the other was just an alley. But we've kind of gotten away from that. I only mention this because, because we can't just take some of the elements of Charbonneau and replicate them somewhere else without taking into account that it was a whole package deal. And there are certain things that, there are a bunch of other things. You have to think about the streetscape.
To make it fit.
To make it a streetscape as opposed to an alley.
Yeah, I think this idea of where you don't have on-street parking providing these little pullouts is the main thing that we're looking at.
That's the main, the main thing here. But a lot of ideas about driveways, but we have to be careful if those are drive, full driveways on an alley versus driveways on a...
Right, right.
One comment I wanted to make about what we require, and I walk around a lot of neighborhoods and I live in Villalobah, but I go to other neighborhoods, so I don't only walk there. And I'll tell you, there are some gigantic garages that are packed to the gills.
With stuff.
So it's every, every part of our world, we have that thing with our stuff. So it's, and I also, but I just think the storage thing is a cultural thing that needs to be worked on somehow. Maybe some people will do that. We can't control what people want to do with their storage. And I like the idea of the visitor parking periodically. And it has, I think what we have learned from Charbonneau is it can work in a neighborhood if you know it's there when you come into it. You know, you, this is, this is part of the thing with a, with a neighborhood association and HOAs, it comes with those things and it can be managed. So I think that is a good option. Maybe there can be, that permeable surface, I think, helps as well if we can do that.
Did you say permeable or impermeable?
Permeable.
Permeable, so the water could get through.
So you don't have to build additional stormwater treatment.
Yeah.
So that water can go through it.
Goes through the concrete.
Okay. You're not talking about grass or gravel?
No.
No.
Okay.
And I just thought the comments people made about wanting to have the, I just agree with the idea of separating the driveways if we can to give people as much opportunity for their own space as they can get. And trying something about, you know, you've got to give somewhere. So I think it's interesting to try the incentive for the garage parking. And I agree with Councilor Linville that if it's too small of a garage, it's just going to be a problem. So I know we've got more things to discuss and it's six, help me out with the time management of your...
I think we have about 10 minutes.
10 more minutes.
Yeah. So, which we should be fine. Let's go ahead and, these other items, I think will be fairly short, particularly this next one. Just revisit, it's early in our discussions back, and going back to January, February timeframe. We talked about the flexibility of being able to divide up middle housing so you could sell the unit separately, which provides, really supports that homeownership concept, which the councils talked, has a goal about, and also provides flexibility. So at that point, we tabled the topic back then because we knew the legislature might do something this year. And indeed, they have. In late May, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill 458, which enabled this type of land division and actually required it in some circumstances at a state level, which enabled us to dust off this work we had done late last year and bring it forward as part of this package now. So how this works is it allows these divisions to happen only for plating and property transfer purposes. Zoning regulations would still be applied to what we'd call the parent lot. So you end up with a parent lot and then lots within that lot or child lots. And it also doesn't change the type of housing unit. So if it's built as a duplex, even though you divide it, it's still a duplex, it's not a townhouse, which has some legal and code application, makes it a lot easier to apply the code, being able to keep it the same type of unit. So this, and it would apply to middle housing as well as to accessory dwelling units. So if someone had an accessory dwelling unit, they could sell it separately and provide an ownership opportunity for someone. This is an example I drew up of an existing duplex that could be divided further into a triplex. And so you'd have the two, the three units with access easements and shared parking, which would provide three affordable ownership opportunities that do not exist today. The state law is pretty straightforward, makes it pretty straightforward, sets all the rules about what's required, which will make it, which I feel confident will make it functional and not cause undue issues or... So definitely recommend moving forward with this for the flexibility and the ownership opportunities that it provides, while providing the same urban form that it would be permitted without it. So any comments, thoughts on this?
Well, I hadn't heard about that, about selling the other units separately, selling an ADU. I'm presuming that that would only be true if it had independent utility service or...
Yeah. So that's one of the requirements. There has to be independent utility services and that sort of thing. So that's all spelled out in both the code as well as state law.
Okay. But ordinarily, an ADU isn't, doesn't have to have separate.
Yeah.
Right.
Because ADUs are sometimes, you know, apartment over the garage or down in the basement or something.
So it has to meet quite a few conditions to be, to qualify for this.
Correct. But it does provide more flexibility.
Do you have this written up in the way it would show up in the code yet?
Yes.
Okay. What page is that on?
So this isn't in this packet with the timeframe. I'm happy to share that with council because this came forward with the turnaround with council packets.
I imagine we can look at it later.
Yeah. And it's in the Planning Commission packet as well from last week.
Okay.
But encourage you to have a look because it would be part of the, it's planned as part of the hearing for Planning Commission in September. But, I mean, in the end, it's pretty straightforward. It follows the state law that allows this type of division to occur.
I see no more comments on this.
Okay. So let's talk about Frog Pond. So we've talked about, Planning Commission has talked about this quite a bit. We've talked about it here at council. So kind of backing up a bit, so after talking to developers and understanding kind of their thoughts about Frog Pond West, just where the pace of development and where they were in their deals, it sounded like they were moving forward primarily with single family and that we wouldn't see much if any additional middle housing in Frog Pond West. Planning Commission had some concern about that, that, and that there's an opportunity with kind of the new rules and this new approach to provide that those housing options, those different ownership options in Frog Pond West, while staying true to the look, fill, and function from the master plan, to be able to accommodate those within the framework of the existing master plan. So we looked at that for a while. We really focused in on this concept of a 10% requirement. And as we've discussed before, as the status of development moves forward, we found that that would only apply to a relatively small portion and not really end up with many, with much more units, not really have a significant impact. And so we put our thinking, we put our thinking caps back on and have worked on a new refined approach that gets away from the requirement, but really kind of tries to, rather than putting up a dam or a diversion, if you would, in the stream of development, really tries to flow with that development to get it, to get a result that would be as much or more middle housing out there than a requirement would lead to. So one of the key, and so there's really three prongs to this approach, which working together would accomplish this. First of all, a key is this broad allowance of middle housing land divisions. Because one of the, one apprehension developers had about building a bunch of duplexes is you're marketing the duplexes to a different market than you would be a single-family home. Because you're selling it to someone that wants it, plus a rental unit or a multi-generational situation where, you know, kids and parents are buying the house together or something like that, which is a much more limited market. So the allowance of middle housing land division changes that calculus where, you know, any type of configuration, most configurations that you could build in middle housing, you could then divide and sell to that individual homeowner, which is really the market that these developers are used to. The next component is a lot size reduction incentive. We've seen this a popular thing that currently exists in the code and in the master plan for preservation of trees and natural resources. Oftentimes, you know, the, each sub-district is given a certain maximum number of lots that they're allowed. However, oftentimes, based on street alignments and just other geometry that goes into site planning, you get block sizes that don't allow you to evenly divide up into lots that meet the minimum lot size. And so having some flexibility to go below that minimum lot size is something that developers often look for in order to accommodate those odd-shaped blocks that aren't the perfect shape for them to get the number of lots that they're looking for. So I have a slide that kind of demonstrates that a bit more, but so I'll table that for a second. The third prong is something we're working on with the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. It's kind of too involved to really get through it in the timeframe for this project, but that's to look at variable rate, infrastructure, fees, and SDCs, which reducing the cost of each unit for middle housing acts as a market incentive to potentially produce more. So those combined, we think will really support the market in providing more options, will again, keep that look, fill, and function and that was envisioned for Frog Pond. So an example of this lot size reduction idea. So again, this is a shape, it's kind of, the location of streets is controlled by streets and neighboring subdivisions and some other things. And so they end up, they're wanting, in this scenario, they're wanting, as highlighted, lots 6, 7, 15 and 16 are below the 6,000 square foot minimum lot size. What would be proposed is that we would allow that if they designate four other lots that do meet the minimum lot size as for middle housing. So these four 6,000-plus lots would then be for middle housing, which for doing that, we would allow that incentive to reduce some of these lots. So, that allows them flexibility and allows, and something about this as well is it still maintains the required lot width and depth. So, from an urban design standpoint, you're still meeting the standards out there, but maybe you have a shallower lot or something like that to reduce the lot size. And then, you're able to use that as an incentive for developers to build middle housing. So...
So, you're, they're able to get to make, maybe make better, get a better opportunity out of the land that they have?
Right, so maybe they'd be limited to, let's say, they're allowed 50 lots, but they can only fit 46 that meet the minimum lot size, but if they reduce a few of those by up to 20%, which is what the current standard is, then they can fit, they can get to that 50 that's allowed, but as an incentive, then they would need to put four middle housing So, that is something that the project team and the Planning Commission have worked on. Planning Commission, initially, we were thinking, okay, we'll put middle housing on the smaller lots, but that seemed a little counterintuitive, so they suggested, well, let's put it on regular-sized lots and allow the single-family homes on, on the smaller lots. This also does a good job of something that we, that has been aimed for with middle housing is it want, we want it integrated within neighborhoods, so the fact that it's kind of on a block basis analysis would, would better enable it to be spread and mixed seamlessly into a neighborhood.
Okay.
So, again, a developer wouldn't have to do this, but it's something that would be attractive to a developer.
Okay, any comments? I think you've covered it.
Okay.
We have more reading to do.
Thank you.
We can, we can call you offline?
Yes, I will be, I will be out Wednesday through Monday, but other than that, I'm available.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Pauli, and we'll now hear from, hear about this city hall water leak repairs.
My oh my.
I'm not going to say drama. It happened.
If you could only see the smile under my face. Let me find this presentation. Hey, Beth?
Yeah, we got you.
How do I share screen again?
minimize, minimize that, and then go back to your zoom, put that up, share screen, and then select it.
Thank you, sorry about that. All right, so we're here to give you just a brief update on where we are with the water damage to the facility and our plan to mitigate the damage. So, I'm going to give you just a little bit background on what happened. I can't go into the details as to what failed, because our insurer is pursuing some legal action, and if you do want those details, I will provide them to Barbara and she can speak to you in executive session. Okay? That'll go into a little bit of what we're going to be doing in terms of trying to make some improvements and then some timeline and what we think we can get done in the interim. So, as you recall, we had a leak here a few months ago. This is just some of the images of what we walked into on Monday morning after the leak had approximately started sometime Saturday afternoon. The damage was extensive. It originated in the break room, the second floor, went through, traveled all across the first floor customer service area, what I'm calling the front of the house, went through the floor, through some of the wall spaces, void spaces, made it down into the bottom floor. So, on the left-hand side is the customer service counter on the top floor, on the right-hand side is the customer service counter on, or the back of the customer service counter on the first floor, and give you an idea of what we came into on the morning of the event. And then, just a couple images of what we did to try and mitigate it. So, when we arrived here on Monday morning, we were made aware at 6:30. We had staff in here by 7:00. We started, you know, triaging the damage and the decision to remove a lot of the water damage areas made fairly quickly. We knew it wasn't salvageable, most of the adhesive was basically falling off. So, we did most of the demo ourselves. Then, we brought in a third-party contractor who did a pretty good job. We were very happy with their work with mitigating the damage. The mitigation has saved us quite a bit of money by not having to remove all of the drywall, but the damage is still pretty extensive, and we are developing a plan for reconstruction that we'll go into here in just a second. So, tomorrow, we'll start an accelerated 30-day design process. We're going to be working with the departments on both the first floor and second floor, and we're going to be figuring out what is an opportunity to restore the front of the house, and we can either restore it to pre-loss condition, which, you know, in our opinion, if most of the damage has taken out a lot of the infrastructure, let's take the opportunity to make some improvements. So, we're bringing on a design firm that is helping with modifying the front desk areas on both the first and the first, first and second floor to both improve the customer service experience and then also look at some efficiencies that we can put in place and some security improvements, both for physical security and COVID security. So, we're going to take advantage of this opportunity to try and make those modifications. And then, just so that you know, the back of the house, which is, you know, where the staff works, not so much customer service areas, we're going to restore those to pre-loss condition. So, to give you an idea of what we're looking at, so the mitigation for just, mitigating the water damage was about $23,000 in work. The insurers covered 100% of that expense. The construction estimate that we have for getting back to a pre-loss condition, both front and back of the house, is almost $100,000. And the CIS, our insurance cover, is going to cover 100% of that, if we want to go back to just pre-loss condition, no improvements. So, city's out-of-pocket expense would be, you know, roughly zero. If we want to take advantage of the improvements, you know, to both the front of the house on first and second floor, so we're going to have to make some additional out-of-pocket expenses. So, again, the mitigation cost is, you know, zero. We are going to bring in a architectural firm that we have on retainer to help us with projects like this. Their fee is roughly $94,000. And then, the construction costs, which if you went back to pre-loss, was going to be $93,000, we're estimating that with the improvements, will be in the neighborhood of $150,000. So, that's some gain of about $60,000 over the pre-loss restoration. So, total out-of-pocket for the city to get us back to where we were on the back of the house, but with improvements on the front of the house, is you're looking at about $150,000 that's out-of-pocket for the city. So, we're going to be doing some targeted repairs on portions of the city that our staff are going to take on themselves. We have been trying to get the ceiling tiles. We ordered those two months ago, and as you can see, supply chain issues throughout the country and the world right now, and they still haven't been delivered. We have an invoice, we just still haven't paid it until they've been delivered. I have formal requests for, where we have a notice to proceed that we're issuing to our architectural firm tomorrow, and then they're going to help us with putting together a public advertising, a bid package, working with our insurer to make sure we're compliant with what the insurer needs for reimbursement cost. They're going to help with developing a design with improvements for security, customer service, and efficiency. They're going to help with developing bids for us, and then they're going to supervise the construction for us and, you know, basically handle it from soup to nuts for us. My staff, myself, with everything else that we have going on, we don't have the bandwidth to take on an additional construction project, so we're paying for their expertise that, frankly, some of it we have, some of it we don't, and so we're paying for the expertise. The hope is to start construction in December of 2021. This is including a 30-day design period, a advertising period of no less than 30 days, complying with all of the Oregon procurement rules. That's what pushes us out to December. And then, hopefully, substantial completion. Our contract will stipulate 60 days for construction. There is always a caveat in construction contracts for supply chain issues, and so if we start facing some of those, it may be a little bit later than January of 2022. That's the brief update we wanted to give you guys. I mentioned it's $150,000 out-of-pocket for the city, so we will be coming back to you. We've already coordinated with our new finance director, and we'll be bringing a supplemental budget amendment to you at the next supplemental budget to help cover the additional costs. We feel that this opportunity to make some minor improvements, it's money well spent. I'll be happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions? Well, thank you for your good work, and we're sorry about the leak.
No worries.
Oh, no, I have a question.
Yes.
Question.
So, in the improvements, would that include something like a leak detection thing?
We can...
Isn't there such a thing as you have like smoke detectors, you have water detectors?
It's typically something at the meter, not so much in the building.
At the meter, no, I know, but that would detect if you have water in a place where water isn't supposed to be.
We can look into that. I don't have an answer for you, but yeah, all the leak detection devices I've seen, and this is, the distribution system is at the meter.
Yeah, yeah, but it would seem to me that there are, there would be...
Like a moisture detector in the sheetrock or something like that?
A moisture detector in the wall or in the, in the flooring or something that is a, if, if it's clear that this is a place water doesn't belong, that it would somehow alert you.
We can certainly look at that.
Definitely look into it. That's one of the reasons we brought the architect to board. They're one of the larger firms in the region, and they've got the expertise. We can ask them if they know of such a product.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. Wish you all the best with that. And now, we'd like to invite Mr. Namsoo to report about Twist Bioscience W-I-N Zone adoption.
I'm quite proud. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, members of the City Council. I'm Chris Namsoo. I just have a couple of slides tonight, and I'm presenting in-work session just to have a conversation with you this evening about ordinance number 849, which is adoption of our site-specific urban renewal area for Twist Bioscience through the Wilsonville Investment Now program. I am joined this evening by Nick Papanouk of Tiberius Solutions. He and Elaine Howard are our primary urban renewal consultants, and Nick is here to support me, and if there are technical questions, I will turn to Nick and ask for his assistance on responding to those. I just have a couple of short slides for your information this evening. I wanted to focus primarily on bringing you up to date on where we've been since our last meeting, which was on June 21st, when the Urban Renewal Agency adopted a resolution that essentially set in place, set in motion the establishment of the Twist Bioscience Win Zone. So, following the June 21st meeting, that meeting was important for a number of reasons. It's because it authorizes us to go ahead and contact the taxing entities and let them know and provide them with an official statutorily required 45-day notice that we're going to be adopting an urban renewal plan on a specific date. So, we distributed the draft plan and report at that point to all of the taxing districts and offered to meet with them and to answer any questions that any of them had about the Win Zone program. And we did, we reached out to a couple of our largest districts, the fire district and the school district, and had conversations with the staff at both of those agencies, and both of those agencies were quite supportive of the plan. They thought it was a good use of urban renewal, it was very strategic, and given the acreage at 4.4 acres in area, neither of our largest districts had any concern about the establishment of this. So, at this point, the city has received no written comments from any of the taxing entities about the establishment of our Wilsonville Investment Now zone for Twist Bioscience at the Parkway Woods Business Center. And nobody even asked us for a briefing. We offered to give briefings to the boards, the responsible boards for all those taxing districts, and nobody took us up on that either. And at this point, no briefings, couple of positive conversations with our largest districts, and nobody asked for anything additional. I followed that notice up on August 5th with the final report and plan that ended up in your packet. I distributed that again to all the taxing entities and offered again to answer any specific questions that there may be about the program, and nobody took me up on that one as well. So, we followed all of that up with a public hearing before the Planning Commission on July 14th. I, I went forward to ask the Planning Commission to hold a hearing, and their role was specific, and their role is specific to determining whether the application itself and the urban renewal plan and report are in conformance with the applicable review criteria found in the comprehensive plan. And the applicable review criteria are found in your plan, in your document, a version of that is included in the packet. And the Planning Commission was very engaged, they had a lot of questions, and at the end of their deliberation, they determined that the urban renewal plan as proposed was compliant with the applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, and they forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval onto the City Council, and we conducted a hearing that night as well, and we did not have any citizens come forward and offer any comments at the public hearing at all, either written or in person. So, tonight, we have another public hearing. Tonight on the agenda, we have ordinance number 849. The staff provided notice of that public hearing in the Wilsonville spokesman, as well as provided some postings in various locations throughout the city. Additionally to that, we mailed a postcard to every address in the 97070 zip code, and that totals well over, over 4,000 individual notifications that went out. Those notifications were hung up slightly by the postal service, not pointing any fingers at anybody, but a wide variety of factors resulted in that not getting out as early as would be ideal. They went to doorsteps early last week, so there was a full week notice. I started getting a couple of email responses in response to that notification. I have to say, the notice could have been somewhat clearer. It was not quite in layman's terms, and it was confusing to some folks. Obviously, we're dealing with a very complicated subject, and it's sometimes really difficult to boil that subject matter down to two sentences on a four-by-six postcard. So, I fielded some, some miscommunication. I've tried to respond to everybody who's written in to the council. I've either thanked them for their comments or I've tried to clarify errors that were provided in the testimony. Several of them thought that we were doing something outside the city, and that that's not the case. We are inside the city. It said outside of existing urban renewal areas. I think that was somewhat confusing. I think that generally, you know, urban renewal is a controversial topic, so you're going to always get folks who feel somewhat strongly about urban renewal as a concept, and you have folks who also feel about business rebates and company rebates. There are a lot of folks who feel strongly about that. So, you have a handful of emails in the record that basically just say, I oppose this. I had a couple that were in support, two that were in support, there were four that were just kind of comments in general, and they were neutral, neither four were in support, and then five were pretty clear, just almost basically one sentence. Most of them said that they were opposed. So, we also, I also want to point out that it's a complicated situation that's happening right now, because you have SKB, who's the property owner, they own the business park. They are doing a variety of things, and they went to the Development Review Board with site modifications to their building. They had a new entry portico that they wanted to put on, there were some modifications to the parking area, and then Twist themselves are doing a wide variety of things at the site as well, including an outdoor, an outdoor area for a nitrogen tank, as well as a whole bunch of interior tenant improvements. So, Twist is submitted to the city's building division. SKB has been to a hearing before the Development Review Board that was approved, and then they made modifications to that that resulted in some notices being sent out to the surrounding property owners. Some of those notices that ended up going to the Canyon Creek neighborhood raised some concerns with some citizens in the Canyon Creek neighborhood as part of planning division processing administrative reviews that have nothing to do with the Twist Bioscience program that you have before you this evening. So, there's a lot of land use activity that I just want to explain how it's difficult when you receive multiple notices from different applicants under different scenarios and DRB and then administrative review, but the citizens raised some concerns. We held a public open house for them on very short notice on July 28th, where Twist Bioscience representatives and their CEO, Emily La... folks understood much better what was going on at the site. And I'm sorry, I'm running out of time, so I'm going to hit this last slide and open it for questions. But statement from Twist suggests that none of the products are alive. There are no live viruses at the site, at the Wilsonville site, and there are no plans for live viruses. Tonight, following my presentation in the hearing, Angela Bidding, who's the Senior Vice President of Corporate Affairs, will be making a presentation to you on behalf of the company. And she's bringing with her her architect to answer technical questions that the council may have. So I think that'll be a great opportunity for council to get any specific information on the table about their operation. There are no biological hazardous materials on the site. The outdoor tank that they are installing contains liquid nitrogen, which is a fairly common material that we find in our industrial zone. There are a lot of industries that use liquid nitrogen for their processes, so that is not too terribly unique. They do run a completely closed system based on Counselor Lehan asking some questions that Mr. Romero answered at a previous meeting. And 100% of the waste that they generate is captured and processed outside the city consistent with hazardous waste disposal protocols. And then I would point out that we run an industrial pretreatment program as a city, our Public Works Department. And at this point, it doesn't look like Twist will even require an industrial pretreatment permit from the city because their discharge is normal discharge. They are not discharging into our sanitary sewer system anything of a chemical nature, any kind of treated materials that would warrant them obtaining an industrial pretreatment permit from the city's Public Works Department. And then I received some questions about their commuting patterns and how they might be coming and going from San Francisco to Wilsonville. So Ms. Bidding and I had a good conversation about their travel patterns and whether they might be likely to use a place like the Aurora State Airport for commuting. And they have told me in no uncertain terms, the corporation owns no company jets. They are a self-reported pedestrian traveler in that they will be utilizing Portland International Airport and San Francisco International Airport, and they have absolutely no intent to utilize Aurora for any of their commuting, any of their commuting patterns. So I wanted to be clear on the record about that as well. And tonight, we are going to be looking at adoption of ordinance number 849, which is a 4.4 acre area that would be put into an urban renewal district for the purposes of economic development. Again, Twist is bringing $70 million worth of investment to the Wilsonville community and a commitment to create 200 jobs in the first year of operation. And Ms. Bidding will also have some additional information on the types of jobs that we'll have. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
You're, you've got a minute to spare for our next five. We have, what, five minutes?
Well, I would just say the last item on the agenda is really just, they're here to answer any questions you might have. I don't think you have a, you have a, there's no presentation.
If we can take a couple of minutes for that.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Namsoo? Counselor Lindvile?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I really appreciate that you addressed the questions that were in my mind that had to do with why we were having some of the, I received a phone call from at least one person who wanted to know why we were doing something outside of the urban growth boundary and I was confused about that and thought, where in the world did you get that information? So I appreciate that you clarified a lot of that. And I thought originally that the issue of the commuting at the Aurora Airport was their issue. They had provided that in one of their earlier documents.
Yeah, there was a comment in an article or something.
Yeah, it was in their press release.
Yeah. I think it was in a Q and A and it was just saying that this is an easy flight.
Yeah. Nothing I saw ever said Aurora. I think we interpreted that it could be a...
They do fly...
A convenient flight, which...
And now, now it sounds like they're going to walk to Wilsonville, so that's even better. You know, these are really healthy people.
Are these birds good?
But you mean, I don't, I've never heard of pedestrian air travel, but I guess they meant you're not driving, you're not flying your own jet.
Pedestrian mode of air travel, yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
They're flying coach.
But I have heard, I will say, on this topic, I go to a number of the Greater Portland Inc. meetings, which is the economic development group that we participate in. And there's been a lot of talk and admiration for the fact that Twist Bioscience is coming to Wilsonville. And I've read a few things about them too, and I'm looking forward to learning more at the regular meeting.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we will move to Mr. Simonton.
He's here to answer any questions that you might have about the item B under consent agenda.
Okay.
If you don't have questions, then I'm sure he's happy to, you can come on up, Scott, just in case they, they do have questions.
So on the consent agenda, we have resolution 2918 authorizing SMART to enter into an agreement with Northwest Natural Gas. And why don't you go ahead and describe it?
Yeah, essentially, we need to upgrade our natural gas fueling equipment, both because the existing is old and because we need further expansion. Northwest Natural has a program where they will build, maintain, and operate that equipment for us, so we no longer have to do that. Solves a lot of problems on our day-to-day.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, no questions, but I think that's, this is a great problem to have, isn't it? I mean, really, where we have so much need for natural gas for our vehicles that we have to upgrade and replace, I think it's a great problem for us to have. And it's nice that Northwest Natural Gas is the sole provider in Oregon, so that's really good that they happen to be our providers though.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Simonton.
All right. Thank you.
I will...
Adjourn the work session.
Adjourn the work session. Work session is adjourned at 7:03 and should we just go right straight into the meeting?
We need a few minutes.
We need to...
Seven minutes.
Oh, we still need seven minutes.
Seven-minute break.
Exactly seven.
Exactly seven.